Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Dieroff. Mrs. Kratz. Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Penarello.
And Professor Lisa in moments.
I would like to apply the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board had three meetings since the last executive meetings, July 29th was 210 minutes. It was personnel. August 5th was 150 minutes and also personnel. And tonight about 30 minutes, again, legal information. And that was approximately 30 minutes.
Okay, that takes us to our discussion and information section of the evening. I am going to invite Mr. Stout, our Assistant Superintendent and our Director of OTL, Mrs. Stephanie Petrie, to introduce and present Magic School AI. And later this evening, the board will be considering a motion of its approval as a possible program here in the district.
Thank you so much, Dr. David Heiser. What Mrs. Petrie is handing out to you right now is just a preview of a document that we have created. It is absolutely, I can't emphasize enough, in draft form to help support our moving forward with the use of artificial intelligence within the Boyertown area school district. The first page of this document is really focused on policy 815.1. Back in the springtime, you remember, we went through and had our AI policy approved. This is a nice little general overview of what the like purpose and scope, AI literacy and training prohibited uses and so on. I won't bore you with all the information that's on this. It is repetitive for our policy. But if you turn it over to the to the second side, this is a tool that we are taking into consideration when we think about having our teachers have AI as a resource in their classroom and really thinking about how they can benefit from utilizing artificial intelligence. Those first three questions are really thoughts that every instructor in our district should be thinking about. And I love the first one, what do you want your students to do and be able to do as a result of this learning experience? And I think that's critical as you think about what your instructional purpose and your instructional objective is. And if you think about the intent of what you're trying to teach and the tools that will ultimately get to you to have students achieve that goal, it'll help you be a very effective teacher. So one of the very quick resources that we are looking to implement for this upcoming school year is really a stoplight kind of process. There is there is an orange color in the stoplight. It's four colors. It's so it's there's a little extra, but there's a nice little stoplight at the bottom. But if you think of this from the elementary perspective, all the way up to the senior high, and thinking about how you could benefit or how you would allow the use of artificial intelligence in the classroom, this is a really nice tool. So if you are a classroom instructor who wants to give students the opportunity to use artificial intelligence in the classroom to its fullest capacity, and by the way, the next part of our presentation is going to talk about a framework and tools that we will hopefully, with your approval, provide for our classrooms and students for the upcoming school year, it's a green light. You have the ability to do that. You have the ability to utilize the resources that are available to you that are approved resources for the district. Yellow is kind of a mix. You have the opportunity to utilize AI resources. And as you move down to actual red, that's when we shut down the AI resources and you are asked to perform in a way that does not have that resource available to you. I'll say to you, like, I would think of red as our state assessments, that when we have our students take state assessments, we really have to lock everything down and students do not have access to be able to do that. That's a very extreme case. So as we think about moving forward with our supports for our teachers for the upcoming school year, this is kind of an example of a preliminary procedure, process that we want to move forward with. We are going to bring this to our artificial intelligence committee for discussion as we move into the school year. So we wanted to present this to you today as a precursor to presenting Magic School to you. So with that being said, I think we're going to switch over and we are going to give you information on a tool that we have researched. We have spent a lot of time. We've given some some key teachers within our district the opportunity. For those of you that don't know, when you get to to play as a student, you often will play in a sandbox and you get to play in the sandbox. When you get to use technological tools, they give you sandbox accessibility. So we had approximately 10 to 15 teachers administrators have access to Magic School over the course of the summer and really have full access to what the the power of the tool can actually do. I will start off by saying the awesome opportunity for Magic School and what it provides for us to do is really control the environment as much as we possibly can at this particular time that gives students access to artificial intelligence. Rather than students having the ability to go out, find their own artificial intelligence resources that are vetted, not vetted, that get through our filters, that don't get through our filters, this is a controlled environment that teachers give students the access to the tools that are available. And by the way, it gives teachers a very large toolbox to really support embedding artificial intelligence in their instruction. So our goal tonight is really to go over a few items and we would like to ask for your approval later in the meeting. I will say to all of you, apologies for typically, this would be a presentation that we would give to you in this meeting and then look to the next meeting at the end of August, August 26th, I believe, to approve the tool. But we are moving forward a little quicker than we typically would because we would love to have this in place to start with our teachers when they come back to us next week. We have some preliminary plans to potentially provide professional learning for our teachers to be able to do that. So that is why we wanted to take the maximum amount of time during the course of the summer to give our student, our teachers resource, the resource to play in that sandbox, to really vet it, to make the determination if, in fact, this is a tool that could very much benefit our teachers and staff. So you're going to learn about what Magic School AI is, why would we potentially use Magic School AI, helping students and teachers, the safety that's behind and the regulations that support Magic School AI, the pilot that I just discussed a little bit that happened over the summer. And also, we're going to talk about Magic School AI certifications. There's actually small courses that our teachers can take as well as our students to understand what artificial intelligence is and how this tool can benefit them. And finally, the cost, what is this going to cost as we move forward? So I'm going to start off by a quick overview of what Magic School AI is. It's an education-focused artificial intelligence platform designed to support both teachers and students in meaningful and time-saving ways. And that's super critical. It is for both teachers and students to be supported. Teachers have the ability to utilize the tool as much as they possibly feel comfortable and then move forward as appropriate, giving their students it as a resource should they feel that's where they are in their particular instruction. And for educators, there are a lot of different types of scenarios here that educators can benefit. They can do lesson planning, they can differentiate their instruction. When we talk about meeting the needs of individual students within our classrooms, the word differentiate is a key school term. And when you differentiate, you're meeting the needs of your multiple students in your classroom. It helps to generate assessments, provide feedback to students that's aligned with the standards and best practices. Our students have access to Magic School as a learning support tool, helping them with writing, research, understanding, and complex topics that are age-appropriate through teacher-guided prompts and, you know, the important components of what instruction looks like. So I'm going to show you a brief video that is going to show Magic School in action. And then Mrs. Petrie is going to kind of give you an overview that really discusses the items that are in the video more specifically about, you know, what it actually means to be in place in a classroom. So it's a video is pretty brief and gives you a nice little overview. So here you go.
Hi, my name is Andrew Davies and I am the Community and Social Media Manager here at Magic School. And I am so excited to give you a quick walkthrough of all the things that Magic School has to offer both your teachers and your students. So first of all, what is Magic School? Magic School is a vast array of AI tools created for educators. We are about 75 to 80% former educators. Every tool that you see here is designed from a teacher's perspective. Now with that in mind, let's dive in so you can see kind of what these tools look like and what they can do for teachers. Now, the first tool that I looked at when I first looked at Magic School about two years ago was the rubric generator. So when you first open the tool, which you'll first see are several places where you can put in information or parameters. All of our tools are very similar. I'm going to go ahead and select fifth grade. I'm going to do a five-point scale. Now here, I can choose the standard or objective. This is really cool. If you were in the state of South Carolina, for example, I could look up the standards of South Carolina, I could download the PDF, I could upload them here straight to the tool. So that way, when the rubric is created, it is referencing those standards. For now, I'm going to keep it very simple. I'm just going to say writing.
Just just for clarity's sake, I wanted to make sure everybody understood what a rubric is. A rubric would be something that would be a tool that a teacher could utilize that would support whatever that writing process might be in their classroom. So it would create the specific criteria that the teachers would use to assess their students in that writing process. So when they say create the rubric, this would take the concept that they want to do for the writing process and then it break it down into the different look fours that would happen in that that writing process. So I just want to make sure everybody understood the the educational jargon that goes along with that.
Argument of essay in South Carolina. Now, assignment descriptions is exactly as it sounds. I'm just going to tell the AI exactly what the students are being expected to do. So I said, students are writing an argument of essay about whether or not they should be able to bring cell phones to school. And then additional customization, I'm going to leave this blank for now, just so I can show you what this can do without those customizations. I'm going to hit generate. So here it is creating that rubric for me, a starting point. So from here, a teacher can continue to make edits within our built-in editor if they'd like to. They can also export this rubric to Google Docs or Microsoft Word. They can have it printed, copy and paste it if they need to. You'll also notice that all of our tools have the ability to have it read aloud and teachers can also save these resources. Now, one of my favorite features of Magic School is down here at the bottom, this chat bar allows the teacher to continue the conversation with the AI, making adjustments on the fly. So here, I want to add a column for teacher comments. Just like that, the rubric was recreated with that column for teacher comments. Maybe I want to change the language of the rubric so that way it's more of a self-reflection piece for the student and instantly I can have that done, ready to go to give to my students. So now I have my teacher rubric, I have one for the students. And let's just say that this fifth grader is actually reading at a third grade level. I can have the actual text dropped on anything that I create in Magic School instantly. Last but not least, over here on the.
So just to give you another connection to something I made reference to earlier, when you think about differentiating to meet the individual needs of students, this is an example of a fifth grade rubric that would be for a fifth grade writing prompt, but let's just say we have a struggling learner who might be on a third grade level, just with a click of a button, it automatically takes that information and converts it to a third grade level, takes the same concept that goes along that. So from an educational perspective, we would call that differentiating to meet the individual needs of students in our classroom.
Well, after we have these action buttons, I can click the action button and I can have this translated immediately. So just like that, it's translated right here in the same interface and I can get this to my student who needs it. Every tool works the same way. You can have these same customizations in every tool. Now, I told you, we have over 80 different tools available to teachers. And you may have also noticed on my screen that there are different tools that say custom next to them. This is a new feature that we recently launched where you can actually create your own custom tool. I won't go too far into detail into what this can do, but it's important for you to understand how powerful this can be for your district. If I go to create a custom tool, I can select the lesson plan generator. So I can make this a fifth grade, South Carolina lesson plan tool and I can make it based on my district. Here on the custom instructions, I can actually give it any type of instruction that I want. If I want every lesson plan to follow a certain format that our district is requiring, I can add that to the instructions. I can even upload an example of that format. Now, another amazing piece of Magic School is Raina. Raina is our chatbot. Raina is our chat GPT designed to be an instructional coach. You can ask Raina almost anything educator-related and Raina will guide you. What are some ways to include technology into a lesson about sedentary rock? Not the most interesting thing in the world, but maybe we can make it better with technology. So right here, Raina is giving me suggestions on how I could incorporate technology into that lesson. Okay, so I spent a lot of time on what the teachers can do with Magic School. We also have a student-facing version as well. The student-facing version is identical to the teacher-facing. That makes it really easy. When a teacher is ready to introduce students to AI, they can easily move and transition from.
So I just want to point out the wording he just used is when the teacher is ready. So being able, the, this is designed that our staff, if they are not ready yet to roll this out with students, their learning or their understanding of how the tool works is not at the level that they're ready to share it out with students, they can control that piece so that when they are ready to share out with students, it's not available all the time, they can control how much the access that their classroom has to Magic School. So I think that's a pretty cool feature that we can enable in the classroom or disable if necessary.
Going from their platform to the student. This is what the teacher can see. Now, if you'll notice that one Andrew here has some flags next to their name. I can click here and I can see the entire output history for Andrew and what type of conversation he was having with the AI. The student said, this is dumb and you suck. And this was flagged as harassment. Now, if you ran into that issue with a student, the teacher has the ability to pause or lock the students' interactions with the chatbots or you can remove the student from the room. Now, let me show you what it looks like from the student's view. So the student's view, you can see that they just put in their first name. So here, these are all the tools that I gave these students access to. So as a student, I can only use these tools because Mr. Davies gave them to me. One thing to keep in mind is the teacher is still in control here. You can decide what tools to give students and for what purpose. Now, that's pretty much an overview of what Magic School has to offer. Thanks for watching. I hope this was helpful.
I was an educator. I was a teacher in a principal and I, for my entire career, I founded a public high school here in.
Thought my voice got a little bit lower there for a little bit.
I do have one question.
Yep. Yeah, and we do, we have a couple more slides that we might answer your question, but if you want to ask it now.
Now, this is completely customizable, correct? The teacher customizes everything?
Yes.
So what would be considered a review process on these individual plans? Like, how are they reviewed? What are they reviewed by? So once the teacher puts that, it goes directly to the student and there's no review process? I'm just curious as to how that's handled.
Yeah, so that's a great question. And, you know, in the platform, administrative rights have the ability to see what teachers are working on, on the backside. So as we look through how we're going to be using Magic School AI, if it's approved tonight, there's going to be a lot of learning along the way, a lot of structure and guidance to how staff should be using it in order to enhance their instruction. And also looking at how can we use those tools that one teacher may find to collaborate and use that resource in multiple classrooms.
So everything is archived, then? So it's archived and reviewable?
Yes, yes. Yes, we can see, on the administrative side, we can see the history of use. Yep. And that was a question that had come up that our, the, the team at Magic School AI is very responsive. So when there is something that comes up that we're not sure about, we have questions, they have been very, very responsive to help us understand what the the tools are and how to best use them.
Yeah, I'm just kind of looking for a free-for-all.
Yeah, yep, absolutely. Yep. Okay, so just moving forward and looking at an overview, so the 80-plus easy-to-use things that are already pre-populated, one of the things I want to point out from the video is they had mentioned the customized tools. So some of our teachers who have had the the access to Magic School AI over the summer have played around with some of the customized tools and tailored it to our specific pacing guides, learning targets, and the things that we are designing within our curriculum. So that kind of answers your question a little bit as well, is that as curriculum teams get together, they can utilize this resource to customize what we're doing in all classrooms and share that information. So once a customized tool is developed, it can then be shared to all, let's say, third grade. They can all share that resource together. And as you could look up, and I know it's a little small to see, but those are just some examples of the icons that was shared in the video as well of some of those 80 tools. So thinking about some of the reasons why we would want to use Magic School AI is thinking about time to save. So when you look at that rubric generator example, you know, it gave a structure for the the rubric, but then the teacher can look at that, evaluate it, is that rubric assessing or telling me what I want my students to know and be able to do? And if the answer is yes, then I can say, all right, let's now put this in different reading levels or maybe I need to extend to something more challenging, but allows that work to happen so the teacher has, can focus on what does that feedback look like for those students? It really empowers our educators to create that safe, responsible AI experience. So, you know, one of the things that we've talked about with our team is we don't want our students just going out on any AI platform and just kind of playing around without any security around it. So this allows that safe, secure environment for us to teach students the ethical and responsible use of AI along with our educators. And it's very easy to use. It's very user-friendly. I was fortunate to have one of the the sandbox accounts this summer and you could spend hours. Once you start going and then you get excited about something that you find in a resource and thinking about how you could use it with students, it really is very empowering to see all the different ideas and resources that are provided. So again, thinking about how we can help our staff of looking at those rubric generators, that collaboration then between colleagues to share those ideas. And the really powerful thing about having some of these common rubrics then is that it also is consistency as we talk between classrooms and grade levels and are we, are we using similar assessments? So it gives us a tool to be able to have some of those additional conversations. The differentiation is a huge piece. You know, our English language learner numbers are increasing within the district and that key feature to be able to ask it to translate into another language is really powerful so that we can make sure all of our learners are accessing the content, you know, if it's in, you know, potentially a native language that they need some support with. There's also some newsletter generators, so another way to to be communicating with our families and and then also being able to, you know, generate that original content that is specific to our district and aligned to what we want to do along with our strategic plan and our mission and vision. So during the pilot, some of the things that we really felt were really important to point out and and where we feel strongly that this is a really good tool that we would like to pursue is really around safety. So AI is built with, this is, this particular AI is built with safety in mind and privacy. So it complies with FERPA and COPRA and it does not collect our students' data and use that for, using along around the worldwide web. So in other AI programs, when you input a question or an information, it starts to use your thinking to help generate other answers for other people. So this stays housed within Magic School AI, so it protects our students' thoughts and ideas, our teachers' thoughts and ideas. So it really allows us to keep that in a secure environment. This summer, we did have a limited pilot with a handful of teachers, instructional coaches and administrators along, you know, and most of them are part of our AI policy committee and that is a diverse group of interests related to AI, some, some individuals who weren't as familiar, to others who were really excited about it because we wanted to make sure we had that that varied opinion and the resources. We met with the team just to see, get some feedback and it was overwhelmingly positive. They really were very excited about the resource and the things that they discovered over the summer when they had some time to play around with the tools. So the other thing that we're really excited about are these certifications. So there are level certifications that teachers can take that we would like to embed within our professional learning as we look at the course of the school year. And really, this is developing that understanding and it moves on through the different levels so our staff would feel comfortable with using the tools and looking at the varied resources that are available. So it goes up to four levels and then the image generator. And so all of these levels, all these courses take about 15 to 30 minutes depending on the individual's understanding and comfort level of using AI. So they would have within, you know, three and a half hours, they would have the possibility of being able to get all of this learning, obviously spread out over some time with time to practice the skills embedded in each certification course. The other piece are, there's two final courses that are, that need to be completed before the teachers then turn over the the pieces to the students. So these two certifications are helping staff understand how to maximize the students' experience on their end. And then there is a student-level certification course as well. So the educational piece built into the program is really powerful. I was talking with one of our instructional coaches today and she's gone through all of the courses and said, you know, it really was very well done and user-friendly and really empowered her ability to be able to maneuver around the platform. So looking at the cost, obviously, that's a big piece. So thinking about what resources do we currently have and use that we have budgeted in our OTL budget? Reading A to Z is a program that we use at the elementary level to create what's called decodables, where students are using that to decode words and decode books and as they're developing those, those reading skills. In the customizable tools, one of our coaches was able to create a customized tool that develops those decodables within Magic School AI, which would allow us not to have to purchase Reading A to Z, which is the program that we have used in the past, and we'd be able to do that with Magic School. The Reading A to Z is a $22,000 cost per the year. Magic School AI is a $34,000 cost. So obviously, there's a $12,000 difference. But this also is a program for K to 12. So every single teacher, K to 12, would have access to this platform, whereas Reading A to Z is a much smaller audience that has that access to that resource. So when we're looking at being able to maximize our, our resources, we're really spreading that out across all of our staff. The other piece is as we explore the tool over the course of the year, that is a one-year subscription, so that would give us the year to really discuss, explore and determine, is this something that we want to continue to use? Do we find that it has been what we think it will be? And are we seeing an impact on our students and and their ability to access the the curriculum? Throughout the year, we'll also be looking at other tools that we have that maybe potentially could be used in the Magic School platform rather than another resource. But at this time, we just felt Reading A to Z was one that we knew we could make that change with and we felt that Magic School would offer more to the greater masses within that. The remaining $12,000 within the OTL budget, there are pieces that we do feel like we can absorb that related to resources for curriculum and instruction that that would align to our, our goal of what we want to do with our students and staff. Are there any questions related to Magic School? Yes?
So I think Mr. Brophy was maybe kind of going down this road as well, but I am a little worried about consistencies. You know, if you can customize it so easily, before you know it, a teacher at Earl is way off on a different lesson plan than what a teacher at New Hanover is doing. Right? And we're, and we were speaking about always making sure that it's going to be a little bit more equity with learning and all the teachers are doing the same thing. So this, I think this is amazing that even the little demonstration I saw, I like it, but I could see it going off the road very quickly with teachers doing different things. Some teachers not even using it, other teachers using it all the time, so.
Great question. So part of our professional learning plan, if this is approved, is that this will be embedded with our learning experiences all year long. So part of our curriculum time will be the access to Magic School AI and collaboration and sharing about what resources are being used and how it's impacting our individual students. So one thing that's not going away are our pacing guides. So we have curriculum pacing guides, expectations of what students and should be achieving throughout the school year, what they should know and be able to do over the course of the year. That won't change. But maybe what might happen is a teacher may discover, I have a student that needs to be pushed in this certain area, let me see if I can find a tool within Magic School to do that. And then our hope and our, our goal would be that then during a collaborative time during professional learning, they could say, oh, I have a similar student, I was able to use this tool and then be able to share those pieces. So we don't want anyone really working in an island. We know that, you know, you're not together all day, every day, but the, the goal is that these tools, as we learn about them and we use them, would be then shared out with colleagues. then shared out with colleagues, that they're not just kept to themselves.
And then something else real quick then too with, will we be getting updates on any other resources that could be replaced with this or what we're looking at?
Yep. Yes. Yep.
Basically, how many, how many classes does this really apply to? Now, is this something...
So I think it could be used in any class. So I'm going to give an example. So, and this was not Magic School, but it's an AI tool. And it's an example from Gilbertsville. You know, one, my PE teacher did a field day theme related to superheroes. And she used AI to generate characters, themes, and traits, and games that were related to the theme of the field day event. So it saved her hours of time of creating all those individuals on her own, but then she could focus on what the games looked like, the equipment that she would need, how would she be teaching those skills to the students. But the creative piece of it, she got support from the AI generator of that tool that she used. So Magic School really could be used in all content areas. An example from one of our social studies teachers that did the pilot, and I don't remember the exact timeframe that he used, but he used the Magic School AI to take a piece of text written in, let's say, the 1800s, and asked Magic School AI to write it in current lingo for the students to compare and contrast, and then did vice versa. Took a current text and asked it to write in 1800s lingo, and had the students compare and contrast the understanding. So I think there's applications in every content area. I really think K to 12, all teachers would use aspects of it for sure.
Yeah.
So, and we talked about this earlier, but can you explain, we use Google Classroom in some areas, and now this is something that will replace that? You're going to do away with that, correct? Is that my understanding?
No. So Google Classroom is a platform for students, like teachers to house, like posting assignments. So what might happen in this, in Magic School AI, they may say, this student needs this text read at a different reading level. I'm going to generate that, and then I'm going to send that to that child in their Google Classroom, so they have access to the content at their own reading level. So it's not going to replace Google Classroom, but it's going to enhance it and be able to provide more supports into that environment. So they can push out content or an assignment that's generated in Magic School into, directly into the Google Classroom from that platform. So they really work well together.
Okay. So the Magic School, though, has the parameters that the teacher sets, but the Google Classroom really doesn't have that as far as, okay, so the, there's an assignment, and the student goes to chat or Google to AI to get some information. And then they put it back in to their classroom to give to the teacher. How, how will we then detect if that student has used AI to write that whole assignment? Are we still going to be able to do that through Magic School, or is that a separate issue?
Yeah, that's a separate concern. So Magic School AI, so I want to be clear, is not a, an AI detector. So that one example that they did share was, it gives alerts to the teacher if there's something a little fishy or suspicious about the student's work. It'll give like an alert, and that is good instruction, right? So that, that says, hey, I need to touch base with that student and make sure they're understanding what the task is or what the assignment is. But it's not going to, it's not going to do like an AI detection. You know, that, that is a current evolving science that, that at this time, you know, and we, and we had asked Magic School AI about that, and they, at this time, they do not feel confident with the detectors to say yes or no. But our goal with Magic School AI is really to teach the appropriate use of AI, how to use it to enhance what we're doing, and not to just not think. So it's just a, it's a, an idea generator, a collaboration tool, but it doesn't take away from that, that opportunity for a teacher and a student to sit down and discuss those ideas and have that conversation to make sure that students know what we want them to know and that they're able to do.
Well, I'm just a little concerned, because who's checking the facts? We know that AI doesn't always deliver the facts correctly. Sometimes it's great, other times it's not. So who's responsible for checking them? Is that a student issue? Is that a teacher issue? Is it both? How, I know the teacher herself is going, or himself, are going to have to check the information that they get. So is that part of the training of all of this with our students? I think that's the big thing. Are we going to be training them that, look, you're going to get this information from AI, but you, there are some, you're going to have to get a few sources as well, not just the one.
Yeah, and I think that's an important lesson for all, all pieces, right? So when we see anything online, we see something on the TV, whatever it may be, wherever that resource is, we want to triangulate that information. Are there other sources that are affirming that or, or not? Then you have to question, is it accurate or not? You know, and that's the piece where that learning can occur. So if a teacher sees something that doesn't appear to be accurate, they can have that conversation, they can confer with that student and talk about, where did you find this information? What other sources did you have? And where did that come from? To, to determine, maybe we need to redo something here because something doesn't seem right. But they certainly might check, see something that might turn up as a red flag and be able to have that conversation. But yes, in any research classes, our teachers are asking students to make sure they have more than one source to support the findings that they're, they're doing.
And I think Mrs. Scott, to your point, this does not remove the writing process, right? The traditional writing process that our teachers take our students through, that development of a thesis statement, whether you're developing a five paragraph essay and what the steps are, and the revolving feedback that happens constantly in that whole writing process. So, you know, AI can be, it's a retrieval tool, for the most part, into which they're, it's gaining information worldwide from everything that's out there to be able to help with efficiencies, to help with some creative starters and things of that nature. The problem that we've, we've, we've heard and the, Mrs. Petrie and Mr. Stout with the detectors and speaking to some school districts with regard to that, and some of the manufacturers, is that the accuracy of that is, is somewhat, is in question a lot of times. I don't think we're, we're in a space any longer that AI is excluded from anything we do, right? There's an essence of it. It's in our adult lives, let alone our, our students' lives. And we're now trying to train students and educate them how to use it effectively, use it with value, and how it can work to your advantage in some areas of efficiency and idea creation. But the work and the process of teaching the skills necessary for writing, for reading, things of that nature are still true to what we, we still do. Many of those processes, when I was going to school way back in the day, are probably still relevant to those, some of those processes that we, we take today. We just now have advanced tools of how to accurately work with it.
If I may, I'm not an expert on this, but I read enough about this issue. Actually, in the absence of Magic School, currently, any student can utilize AI at home through an app to, you know, plagiarize a paper. Actually, what Magic School does is that the teacher can control the data sources that the student is using. So instead of all of the world's data in AI, Magic School restricts the data. I was talking to Dr. Stout about this, or Mr. Stout about this before the meeting. I call it like, it's like an electronic geofence of data that is a subset of all the data. So there's a much more controlled data source, which makes it easier for the teacher, in the absence even of a detection system, to figure out if there was AI used. Because if there was data sources and other information that was not included in the offered data set, that will make it easier to manage. So I think something like this, and I think that if, am I speaking correctly? It actually enables the teacher to control what information far better than would be the case if we didn't have it.
Okay. Kind of piggybacking off of Mr. Upton Grove and what I said to you guys earlier, I still have a concern, because we're supposed to be teaching our children the same thing throughout our school district. And you had specifically said at that meeting today that some of the teachers may not choose to start doing this yet. And that is a big concern of mine, because we're not going to be teaching our children all the same thing. And that's, that's important to me.
The content that's expected in each grade level would be the same. How it's delivered may look a little bit different, and that's going to be based upon oftentimes the expertise of the teacher and the techniques that a teacher might use. So if you walked into 500 teachers across our district, they all have their own flair and how they teach students in their own way. So this is a tool that just helps to support that. We don't want to put a mandate out there to start that you have to use this, but we want to set the parameters around what it looks like to use this and how to maximize the use of it as a, as an instructional tool to support them.
But you also said at the meeting that they could go the whole year without any of this, and...
They will have, they will have professional learning for the course of the year, and they will be able to pick and use opportunities as they feel comfortable to do that. And we will, we will reinforce as we move forward. But as we discussed today, this is going to be an evolution. AI is in front of us, and we can't deny it's there. This is a way to, what Mr. Saltanik said, creates parameters around us helping to control the use of it in a way that is equitable across the district, that provides our teachers the same opportunities. How they choose to use it is going to be an evolution based upon professional learning they'll be given this year.
But I want to make sure all of our students are getting to use this, not just, just say, one, one, one grade out of one school is not getting it. That's, that's not fair. And I want to make sure we're fair to all of them. So that's one thing. I'm still concerned about that. Another question is, at a parent-teacher conference, when a parent comes in for their child, will they be able to look at any of this and see how their child has been using it or seeing what their child is doing with it?
Yeah, I, I would think that would be a typical part of any kind of information that would be shared at a parent-teacher conference, whether it's student work, anecdotal evidence of what had taken place as far as during the course of the school year. So I, I wouldn't see this as any different than any other tool that a teacher might be using.
Okay. And are we looking at a program for AI detection other than with Magic School? So that the teachers have something to help them? Because this is going to be a big thing for them. If we are, what programs are we looking at, and what costs are we looking at for them?
Yeah, we don't have any, there's a couple tools that are out there. Turnitin is one that I think of that we've utilized over the years here in the district. We are not looking to put something globally in as our district, but it is something that the AI committee will be taking into consideration as we move forward. I would think that Magic School would also be kind of on the, the cutting edge of potentially providing a tool should something become more reliable and supportive of what the need would be. But at this particular time, we are not thinking of putting one in place that's going to have a cost with it, but be monitoring the situation very carefully and talking to colleagues across the county and the state to see what's working in various school districts, if, if, anything.
How many people used that this summer? How many teachers?
I think we had about 10 teachers, I think.
Four or five administrators.
And four or five administrators, yeah.
Of varying levels.
Yeah, so we had representatives from elementary through the high school using it, and subjects as well.
And, and coaches.
Okay. Is there any grant up there?
There, I mean, there's, there's grants out there for numerous things, but at this particular time, we have not looked to specifically target a grant for this process. We, we, we had the opportunity to have a, a little bit of a discount if we committed to a three-year contract. We were very reluctant to do that, just to kind of see what this first year is going to be like. But as we move forward, we can always explore some of the opportunities to see if there's funding out there to support.
Okay, I'm intrigued. This is a, this is a really new program for us, which is pretty obvious what you're saying. It's, it's a really new program a lot of places. What's your plan to monitor and measure success for this program? Like, how do you, how are you going to, how are you going to monitor how it's going? And how are you going to measure and come back to us and say, this program's great, the kids are doing good, we recommend to keep going? Or this isn't doing exactly what we wanted. We may need to modify, or we may need to cut it. So what's, what's your plan on doing that?
That's a great question. So I think the, the big piece about looking at the resources and tools will fall along with, how are we enhancing our current pacing guides, our current curriculums that we're doing? So what pieces, looking at the, the rubric generators or the assessment generators that can be consistent, that we can create across all buildings, that we can see that progress and have those comparisons of growth related to our instruction. So as we are diving into it, we don't like, really have a baseline yet to know of what the capabilities are of the program. But those are the things that we're going to be looking at are, how is it enhancing what our, our students are doing instructionally, and how are we able to assess those things? That are they making the strides? So, you know, I think about also as we roll out the MTSS supports around the district, we're going to be looking for ways to meet students in various ways. And I see Magic School AI really allowing us to differentiate how we will support students based on individual specific needs. So to answer your question is, I, I don't think I can have a solid, like, percentage from now to then. But I think as we utilize the program throughout the year and see how it's enhancing our, our curriculum resources, our common assessments, we'll be able to better say, as we move forward, these are the things that we see the capacity of this program to do for us.
And I would say, Mr. Brophy, to the, you know, from a qualitative perspective, as we work with our teachers during the course of this year for professional learning, the feedback that they provide from their instructional expertise will give us feedback. This is awesome. This, this isn't as good as we thought it would be. And secondly, you know, the goal all the time is to increase student achievement, which is very quantifiable. So just thinking about that piece of it is going to be super important as well to, you know, kind of put those parameters around success.
Yeah, because what I'm thinking is, the easy answer is, we look at the grades, and do the grades go up. I don't think that's the right answer. I think there's many more facets that have to be looked at in this beyond just grades.
There are. And from an instructional practice perspective, if I visit a classroom and I see students more heavily engaged in a lesson and have that opportunity to be the differentiation, I keep dropping this paper clip, the differentiation to meet the individual needs of the students in the classroom, I will be able to see that from an administrator visiting the classroom. So some of those pieces are those, those very strong impact skills that happen that are what good instruction's about, which in turn will have stronger student engagement, which again, students should do, be more efficient in what they do in the classrooms.
Yeah, I'm looking for a global explanation of how, how it's moving, not just one pinpointed thing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think what we need to look at, and we discussed this in a couple of the meetings, this is like when we first got computers, first got cell phones, everything changed right away. As soon as you bought a computer, it was outdated. This is so new. And we did research, and a lot of people went out and checked these other programs, and this is the one that kept coming back positive. And ultimately, I mean, we're not looking like we're going to replace everybody's computer. We're adding a program. At, if you look at 6,000 students, $30,000 doesn't sound a lot. But, you know, in six months, well, probably, if we vote on it tonight, it's already outdated. But hopefully, the teachers stay involved, and we keep going with it. But it's only, you can look at it as a book, an additional book that we added to a class. But I think the heart of the administration and leadership pushes the teachers to use it. I think ultimately, you know, like Mr. Brophy had said, and Mrs. Nyman, about how do we make, and I think once they see how much it'll help them, I think you're going to be seeing used a lot. But, you know, doing this now, what, we had five meetings so far. We started with students, parents, teachers, and we had advanced students in there. And I know the one was afraid to use AI because he didn't think, he didn't, he was afraid he was cheating, instead of using it as a resource to help him learn more about it. So this will help teach the students to where it can be necessary and help them.
And don't forget, a mere handful of months ago, we didn't have a policy around it, and how quickly we generated a policy that hopefully helps to support the how quickly we generated a policy that hopefully helps to support the process moving forward, which I think is a very important tool that the, the school board, you know, helped to facilitate through that AI committee.
Mr. Stout, Mrs. Petrie, to, to Ms. Nyman's point, the only thing I would ask the committee to consider is possibly running a pilot at the various levels this year to see if we might be able to get some free access and run some pilots to get some feedback on the detector. I think there's a lot of people on both sides of, of the fence with regard to what, what, what a detector can bring, can it, can it not? And I think we need some data back from our own people to suggest some things, because I think some of the, the responses would probably be pretty varied based on possibly even the level. Maybe it's not an appropriate tool to be using down at the elementary. We don't need that detection possibly. Maybe it's more relevant at the, at only a, a high school level, and maybe it's only relevant in certain courses to see, you know, we can differ, as we differentiate a lot of other things, we can seek to differentiate some of the, the pieces to that. So I know that's been a discussion point among the committee. I would really encourage, you know, a, a pilot run at some point. Doesn't have to run the whole year, but it might run a course, or it might run a semester or something like that and vary it that way to get us some feedback on, maybe get us to the point of let's, let's solve the, the question of detector. We're either going to jump on and we're going to jump on with this, or, or we're not going to, or it may look a little bit different throughout the district. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone, and I do appreciate the consideration.
And I believe, Mr. Stout, you're going to just remain there at the podium for your next brief. I know the, the board has been informed on some of this information, but if you just want to share out loud a little bit of some of the specifics related to this MOU, and again, this will be something that we would ask for your consideration and motion later in this meeting.
So I'm going to start off by saying this is not nearly as highly complex as artificial intelligence in our 500 classrooms and impacting our 600 students across the district. But this is a document, a memorandum of understanding that was in place last year at Washington Elementary School. We had the opportunity to add a little bit of time onto a few of our special area teachers, specifically library, art, and physical education. And why, might you ask? They're not full-time teachers, so they're only .5 teachers, which means they only have a half-time schedule. So we had the ability last year to add a little bit of time onto their schedule to be able to give our pre-K students some special time, specifically to library, art, and physical education. So we are recommending to the board to move forward with the ability to add a little more time onto their schedule that has zero budgetary impact for the general budget. The funding for this extra support comes from our pre-K budget, which is a, a grant that comes from the state. So it does not have any impact with that. So we, it worked very well last year and was a big benefit, and we want to continue the same practice for this year. So we'll be looking for the approval of this MOU in this meeting. Any questions? Thank you.
Takes us to item C, the 2526 Ole Valley School District and Boyertown School District Agricultural Program Student Agreements. We have two students with agreements. There's an agricultural program that runs out of the Ole Valley School District, and we've had this cooperative program with them in the past. So we are seeking your approval this evening for these two student agreements and allowing that program to be shared with them. And our last item of, of information is our August donation list. We do have two separate donations, one through Shutterfly and monies that were issued on behalf of Life Touch's Spring Program for Boyertown Elementary School. And this money is dedicated toward their vending machine and new books to be placed inside of their book vending machine. And then we also have the PTO of Washington Elementary, who really run a grant program inside their own school, school itself, and teachers are able to apply for necessary items for their classroom, a lot of specific things that we use in some of our very specialized rooms. You can see a list of the various things that are utilized and which teachers can apply toward, and there is $7,000 being donated through this month with regard to various teachers K through five. So the donation list would be asking for your approval at the, the next legislative meeting. So it does take us down to Mr. Zawada, item five.
Mr. Rob Crowe, do you have a report for VCLU? For the first public comment, nobody signed up. So we're looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the July 22, 2025 legislative meeting.
My motion.
Mr. Brad Updike Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updike Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Diroff.
No.
Ms. Nyman.
No.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, it takes us down to the item eight, Superintendent's Consent Agenda. And again, this is the 2025 Ole Valley School District and Boyertown Area School District Agricultural Student Agreements, and the administration is recommending approval of those two student agreements.
Mr. Brad Updike Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updike Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Diroff.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item nine, Superintendent's Itemized Agenda. We do have a few items for your consideration. First is EDM Financial LLC Agreement. And again, this is, the board has been informed of and shared information regarding this contract for financial services upon the departure of Ms. Denacola and a transition of the interim service for needs here within the school district aligned with our business office. We are seeking approval of the EDM Financial Agreement, which we have received some feedback from Mr. Sultanic's office, and we are still finalizing a couple of items. But in general, this is a, an agreement that we are asking for your approval of this evening.
Zawada moves.
A second.
Are we going to see the agreement when it's finalized? Because if we're approving it, I'd like to see it.
Yeah, absolutely. It is some very, very, it's pending, pending solicitor's final review. That's why we have that inside the motion.
Pending more comments after that.
Absolutely.
Mr. Brad Updike Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updike Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Diroff.
No.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B takes us to Magic School AI and your consideration of the Magic School AI program as was presented earlier this evening from Mr. Stout and Mrs. Petrie.
I'll second.
Mr. Brad Updike Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updike Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Diroff.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Takes us to item C, and the administration is requesting approval of the continuation of the Health and Welfare Plan applicable, applicable to supervisory support employees of the ASD, which expired on June 30th on a status quo basis to a new successor Health and Welfare Plan for the supervisory support employees is developed and approved by the board.
Zawada moves. Now, we're still going to be waiting for, or we're going to put the committee together. I've already gotten two responses from board members to get this done ASAP, right?
Yes, just as a reminder to the board, your approval of this motion this evening allows for the required nature of these employees, their employment, and its compensation, while the board at the same time can then continue any changes necessary in a new supervisory support Health and Welfare Plan.
Mr. Brad Updike Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updike Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Diroff.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Takes us to item D, and again, we are, as Mr. Stout had shared, requesting the approval of the MOU for the Washington Elementary School .5 teachers as presented.
Good afternoon. Nine seconds.
It's not, I mean, Ms. Diroff.
What would happen if we would not get funding for this? I mean, with everything we don't know, what's...
Right. So it's a good question. The, the, right now, the funding is, to our best of knowledge, is to be coming. So without that funding, we would be having to fund that through our general fund budget as well until such time that we receive the federal funds.
And we still take this approach?
Yes, I would have said yes. Yes.
Mr. Brad Updike Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updike Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Diroff.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And under item E, Personnel, the administration is recommending approval of the Personnel Agenda as listed.
Zawada moves.
I'll second. A question on this? Okay, we're, okay, inside the, inside of this is a pretty, pretty important move. I mean, we're, it's a, it's, it's, it's a pretty important position. We're moving Mr. Bergy from Assistant Principal to Principal at Gilbertsville Elementary. I don't know if we want to have that inside this, or this should be a separate, a, a separate issue that we, it's a very important position. I think that's something we have to bring out, highlight a little bit more than, than putting it in the middle of 50 approvals. Just, that's just my thought.
And it's something we consider. If, if Mr. Hahn can weigh in on that, it has been traditional that these, all positions placed inside this Personnel Agenda. After your consideration, if upon approval, we are going to make some commentary tonight about a couple of things. But that would be something that if the board so chooses wants to change the formatting.
Yeah, because in effect, I've heard nothing about this at all. So I have a couple, you know, questions that I'd like to ask, like, one would be, you know, how many people were interviewed for the position? And this is nothing about Mr. Bergy, it's just some questions for me that I'd like to...
Well, we've been updating the board in the weeklies with regard to candidates. Mr. Hahn's been doing that inside his section and giving the board the update on candidates and processes that we've been going through with regard to this.
Yeah, but what was the overall, how many, how many candidates did you actually have?
So for this role, we had over 30 candidates apply. We interviewed for first round interview, seven individuals, and four individuals were brought back for second round interviews in front of a panel of probably about 10 to 12, including classroom teachers, administration, and board members.
Okay, so going along with, what I'm trying to do is, I want to show that we're doing our due diligence for these type positions to the public, and so we need to let them know a little bit more about how we're doing this. Like, so who, who was on the committee? Was administration, there were some board members on the committee? Who, who were the board members on the committee?
Mrs. Kratz and Mr....
You weren't on that one. You weren't on that one. Mr. Kr, Mrs. Kratz was on that. You, you couldn't be there. Mrs. Kratz was on that. That's part of the Education Services Committee.
So I can't ask her any questions, so I defer to you.
Well, I can answer as much as I can, and again, we are dealing with personnel.
No, this, this is a pretty generalized question. Like, you had 30 candidates, you brought them back. What, what made Mr. Bergy stand out? Why did you decide that he was the person for that? But let's brag a little bit on why we decided this is...
Well, we were going to do that after with hopeful resolution of your approval this evening, but...
I'm going to do it now because I'm going to vote for him now.
Certainly because of, you know, his resume itself, alone, his work as an elementary teacher, what we see as leadership skills, his, his ability, what we believe is being able to deliver leadership when it comes to the teaching and learning environment and his management, the efforts that we've seen thus far here in the district. He has been an employee over the past five years here in the district and has been highly successful in many different roles as it relates to that. So he rose to the top of our list, going through an extensive search for, as you saw, many, many applicants, a lot of different processes, many rounds of what we went through and performance tasks alike. So it was a, what we believe a very, very thorough and landed on what we believe is a candidate that's going to be very highly successful at Gilbertsville and ultimately highly successful for, for the district in general.
So he stood out in those areas, that's what made him...
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Brophy, real quick, is this something maybe what you said, we should maybe just set a, a level of setting a distinguished type position that we would announce separately of our personnel?
I'm just, I'm just thinking that we're, we're looking at executive, executive type person, positions like this is. It's a very important, not that, not that other positions aren't important.
No, I happen to agree with you.
But, but, yeah, this is a, this is a standout position that has a, a large effect on a lot of students in the district. So I think we owe to the, to the people in the district on, how did we come about to put this individual in, in this spot? I know we, you have your reasons, and they're, they're good ones, but I think we need to share that out there and say, this is how we're doing our due diligence, this is how we're moving forward and getting better in our, in our district. Pretty much what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updike Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Diroff.
I'm going to have to vote no. It's not because of the gentleman that was selected, it's because I'm saying that he's the best candidate when I have not even had the opportunity to see one application except his.
Ms. Nyman, oop, sorry.
That's all right. And so I, I just, I'm going to stop doing this because he's got pushed down my throat. Unless I can see the things now so that I can say he's the best, I believe he probably is, he has the knowledge, but I haven't seen any of the applicants. So I'm, I'm very sorry, has nothing to do with you, sir. Mr. Brophy. Thank you.
I will do a yes, but I kind of agree, we need to see what we've been interviewing so we know what's going on. Not that, you know, you're not picking the right ones, but it would be nice to see what is out there.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So I would like to just make a couple comments. Most especially, I would encourage our board members to participate and be part of committees in the future. As you know, committees are, are, are part, committee members we utilize as part of the interview process rather than an entire board, as we do have other, nearly a dozen other folks that are part of that. So I would encourage those members that would like to be part of committees, that could be, also be part of those interviews. Secondarily, I'd like to certainly welcome Dr. Bergy to his new position. Dr. Bergy is here with us in attendance this evening. Congratulations. As Mr. Brophy said, you were, you were selected among many, many strong candidates, and we do applaud your efforts and, and recognize your abilities in moving into the position. You're filling some large shoes from the person sitting next to you, although your name is not Stephanie, there has been a long lineage of Stephanys at Gilbertsville. So congratulations to you, and we look forward to working with you in the role there. The other certainly wanted to make comment tonight would be on this Personnel Agenda. You did approve the end date for Mrs. but across her five years of assisting the board and the district and putting them in a good financial position. And I do want to wish her well in her, in her next steps, and we will, we will keep tabs on that other district that, and how well they're doing and such in their financial realm along the way. But we do, we do thank Mrs. Denacola for her time here and the efforts that she's put forth. So thank you, and we do wish you the best of luck.
For the second public commentary, Mr. Savage is going to discuss advocating for state funding at Boerstown Elementary School.
So as you all are probably very aware, the state budget is now six weeks overdue, and no state funding can be distributed to public schools until it is passed. So this impacts us directly. We also know that what they're fighting about, some of the things that they can't agree on, is adequately funding public education. So I wanted to refer you to your policy of Principles for Governance and Leadership, Policy 011, and the very first point on there is to advocate earnestly, and that includes championing, championing public education by engaging members of local, state, and federal legislative bodies. So you can raise your hand now if you've been contacting our state legislators to demand adequate funding and charter school funding reform, because the only thing I've seen so far is Mr. Zawada defending our legislators for not supporting it. Thank you very much.
This time of board comments. Mr. Updegrove? Ms. Nyman?
Since we basically have new supervisors in the Facilities Department, I would like to recommend we do an audit or assessment of the condition of all of our buildings. By doing this, we will know what and how soon items of concern need to be addressed in our five to 10-year plan. I think that could be very important. Basically, we have no knowledge up there anymore as to what's going on with our buildings. And that, that's a major concern to me, because if we don't have buildings, we don't have place for our students. So I think we should be, that should be something that goes out, forbid to check our buildings.
So I did charge Mr. Bramble with doing an internal audit, like you're suggesting. Met with him in the first week that he was on board. First of all, focusing on all safety issues related to all of our buildings, especially prior to the start of the school year, and come back with recommendations. On top of that, I did ask him to take a deep dive and look at the settings themselves and our buildings themselves and make any recommendations on things that he feels based on some rubrics that he would use in the field to make those determinations as to what should come back. So I'm expecting those. I asked, the safety conditions could be back in three weeks from the time we last spoke, so we're about a week out from those, and we should be getting some of the other results probably soon after school starts, so we can measure this...
I think we should have a professional come in.
Well, that would be something that the board would have to. We'd have to go on RFP for a full district feasibility study to, to look at the, and target what, what it is you want to look at.
I think we need to have all of our buildings looked at. Nobody here knows what's going on with them. Is there a school A that should be renovated in some way?
Yeah.
I mean, none of us have an idea.
Well, we, we do, based on our capital plan, in which we, we evaluate some of the larger components, when it comes to our mechanical systems and our roof systems, and we've been staying attuned to those. You've been approving some of those through the budgetary process. So if you wanted to get deeper into the weeds with some of that, we could have that done. It is a fairly costly endeavor to, to take on, and the proposals will probably have a pretty significant price tag based on the size of the district we have, but we could do that. I'd be happy to work on putting together with Mr. Bramble an RFP to bring back to the board for your consideration, if that's something that, that the full board would like us to do.
I don't think any of us are qualified to go and look at these buildings.
No, 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 this is...
Or I don't think any of us, or anybody that we have here, is qualified to look at the buildings and say, oh, this needs to be done here, or that needs to be done there. So I think we need a professional to come in here and look at that.
Well, I think we do have professionals inside of our, with certifications, and certainly Mr. Bramble is credentialed to do those types of things. He is certified in those areas to be able to have those evaluations done. So I would consider looking first at some of the evaluations that come back from him and then make a decision whether or not you want more extensiveness in terms of that. And then we could look at putting together an RFP and, and have a, have proposals, you know, brought back to the board to see exactly what it is the cost would be in doing some of those types of things.
What positions are open in our Facilities Department? And how many?
Well, we have our director and our supervisor. I'd have to go back and look at our Skyward offhand. I can't tell you from a facilities perspective. We have, the only one that I know that's open, that's directly related to facilities is our electrician. And Mr. Bramble held two interviews. I updated Dr. David Heiser this afternoon on that. Mr. Bramble held two interviews yesterday for electrician. So I'm waiting to hear some feedback in regards to if those individuals are going to be brought back for a second round interview. But that's the only position that I can recall that is embedded within facilities that's vacant.
What about custodial?
I'd have to check the list. I don't know how many offhand we, we have. I mean, we have at least a dozen sub custodians that are filling any positions that are currently vacant while they interview for custodian, but I can provide, once I go through Skyward and look at what's actually vacant at each building, I can provide you with a number based on location. But we're, our custodial staff, we're, I don't want to say that we're almost full, but we're not in any position where we're lacking more than one at each building. We just had, on this agenda, we hired a lead custodian and a head custodian.
And we lost a custodian.
And we lost a custodian, correct. So I can provide you with data and, and numbers to let you know exactly.
I would like to see that.
Sure.
With all of that being said, how is our new facilities manager supervisor doing?
Well, from a subjective evaluation, I would say fine. We've, I've met with him on two different occasions, been responsive to the questions I've had, and have asked him to do a multitude of things to which he's addressed. So, you know, he will be in our first cabinet meeting together tomorrow morning, and so I think, you know, being here for two and a half weeks, I believe it has been so far, things are going fine.
Okay. I was out and about over the weekend, and I was approached by somebody, and they said there's a rumor going around that someone was caught sleeping on the job. Is that just a rumor, or is that factual?
So there was a, an inquiry that I conducted that Dr. David Heiser was aware of a few weeks ago, and my notes, again, it's, it's personnel in, in nature. The items were corrected and addressed at the time, and we will continue to monitor that situation.
I just want to say thank you, Mrs. Denacola, for your leadership, for providing a steady hand in getting our finances in order, for making it possible for the taxpayer money that we appreciate going towards these major projects that we've had with our facilities, not having to borrow money, but handling the money in a way, and not a reckless way, but in a careful way, that we sit in a good position to continue upgrading our facilities and putting things back in order. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Ms. Dieroff?
Oh, I thank you very much, Mrs. Denacola, for all your help for the past four years. We're sure we're going to miss you, I can tell you that, and we're going to say, where's our money? That's number one. Number two, Dr. David Heiser, I have been asking on committees, and I have been refused. So it's not that I don't want to be on committees, that's what angers me. I could contribute a lot. I've been here a long time. Thank you.
Good luck, Patty, down there. Is that a shorter drive or the same drive?
It's the same drive.
Oh, so you didn't get any, you didn't get anything on that, then?
It's easier, though.
How's the traffic? How's the traffic?
Good.
Better, better, no, no mountain roads, no backroads, you get highways. Okay, good, good luck to you down there.
Thank you.
They have financial challenges.
Yes. I'm up for that.
Mrs. Denacola, good luck, and you will be missed.
Mr. Bergy, welcome aboard. Look forward to you continuing to do the great job that you do. Ms. Denacola, Patty, we've known each other. You've taught me a lot. You've showed me a lot of things. I think anybody on this board that you've asked, that's had a question asked of it, you've been able to fulfill it. And I hope the new school district that you're going to appreciates how good you really are. So best of luck.
Just a few announcements. It takes us to item 12. August 26, we will host a legislative meeting here. We do have, we will be starting committee meetings starting in September, our September 9 Finance Committee Meeting will commence at 6:00 PM here in the same room, followed by our Committee of the Whole Meeting, with a legislative meeting later in the month of September. So we are looking forward. We've had new teachers in the past two days here. We have had approximately 36 new teachers on site for their induction, and things have gone well. Thank you to Mr. Stout, Mrs. Petrie, and all of our curriculum supervisors and principals have been contributing to the onboarding and the induction of, of all those new folks, distribution of all the technology. It's been kind of all hands on deck with such a large group, and we'll continue that through Thursday. Our full staff will be reporting next Tuesday, the 19th. So we'll have an opening ceremony on the, on the 19th. I welcome any board member that would like to come. That first hour is kind of an opening ceremony where you'll hear from a number of speakers, including myself and some other administrators. We will have the, the Bach Show Choir singing the National Anthem and the Alba Mater, as well as hearing from some of the BAEA representatives, some videos that we have embedded and working through with the introduction of all of our new staff. So it should be a really nice morning next Tuesday, and then we really kick things off with more curriculum development through the, the balance of the week with students starting the following, following Monday. So here it comes. Where did summer go? All right? So, well, I thank everybody for this evening.
I want to say real quick, Mr. Stout, what blew me away again, meeting the teachers today, was the amount of teachers that were Boerstown grads that are coming back. So we are doing something right. Motion to adjourn?
Nine seconds.
Brophy, second.